Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call to order the July 16, 2025, regular city council meeting to order.
Ms. Cassandra.
Mayor David Romero. Councillor Marvin Martinez.
President.
Councillor Barbara Casey.
Mayor.
Councillor Michael Montoya. Councillor David Ulibari. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have a quorum.
Mr. City Manager, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councillor Martinez, moment of silence.
I guess at this point, I'd just like to say, you know, a little moment of silence for those people that have passed in our community. It seems like every week that goes by, somebody knows somebody that did pass. And for those that are missing, those individuals, we pray for them. And for our community, for the future of city government, for the employees here, and the rest of us as city officials. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, approval of the agenda, and I do have, we do have a couple of recommendations for amendments to the agenda. The first one is the removal of the presentation by Mr. Travis Martinez. He is not here today, so we will put that on the next agenda. And the other one is a recommendation from city manager is to pull, there are three items on the consent agenda that he would like to have some discussion and clarification on, and that would be consent agenda item number five, number six, and number seven.
Motion, sir. Okay, and just for clarification, where are we moving those two?
To the business items. Those can go prior to the first business item.
Motion by Councillor Montoya. Do you have a second? Second by Councillor Casey. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving on to our public input. We have no public input this evening. Moving on to our mayor's appointments, reports, recognitions, and proclamations. Our first, do you want to do the appointments first?
Yes, let's go ahead and do that.
Our first appointment would be Bonnie Lopez, Sonia Diaz de Leon to the library board. And I have Bonnie Lopez that lives on Mountain View Drive, and Ms. Sonia Diaz de Leon lives in Rosada.
So councillors, so I got recommendations for these two individuals. One was from a committee member currently on the library board, and the other one was a sitting member, and then somewhere down the line, I guess, was never called to a meeting, so I was asking for reappointment. So I don't know if you guys want to do them separately, or you want to do them together as a motion, or?
Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Montoya.
Are these both, are they live within the city limits? Are they?
One of them does.
Mountain View Drive is Bonnie Lopez, and Rosada is Sonia Diaz de Leon. She lives in Rosada.
Rosada?
Yes, sir.
And just for clarification, just, you know, so the governing bodies are aware, I think we've only had two members of the library board probably the past year or more. So, you know, these names came up, and I think, I mean, number one, it's hard to find individuals to sit on this specific board, and, you know, these ones were, came up and offered their service. So that's why I recommended them.
Mr. Mayor. Councillor Ulibari.
Appointment of Mr. Benny Lopez and what's others name? Sonia Diaz.
Motion by the councilman of the library board. By Councillor Ulibari, and second by Councillor Martinez. Welcome.
Councillor Casey.
Yes.
Councillor Martinez.
Yes.
Councillor Montoya.
Yes, point of clarification is that the charter needs to change on this, because we're not abiding by the charter every time we appoint somebody from, that's from without the city limits. But yes, for exception. Thank you.
Councillor Ulibari.
Yes.
I have a motion by Councillor Ulibari, a second by Councillor Martinez. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion carries. The second appointment is appointment of Teresa Diaz, Janice Horton, and Tina Clayton to the lodgers tax board. Ms. Diaz is, her address Plaza Hotel, Janice Horton is on Moreno Street, and Tina Clayton is on Eighth Street.
Mr. Mayor. Councillor Martinez.
I'll go ahead and move for the appointment of Teresa Diaz, Janice Horton, and Tina Clayton to the lodgers tax board.
Motion by Councillor Martinez, second by Councillor Casey.
Councillor Ulibari.
Yes.
Councillor Montoya.
Yes.
Councillor Casey.
Yes.
Councillor Martinez.
Yes.
I have a motion by Councillor Martinez, a second by Councillor Casey. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion carries. Do you have a report, Mr. Mayor?
As far as my report, I'll let Councillor Montoya talk about the event we attended today. But I did want to, you know, in being more transparent, as Councillor Casey had asked, I'm going to work more with Ms. Cassandra Frescas, the clerk. And I know that there's, you know, some, for instance, the Highway Commission meeting tomorrow, and I know it was too late to work with her on that one. We have NRPDO coming up, and prehistoric, the historic preservation coming up in October. But what I might, you know, moving forward, what I'd like to do is work with Ms. Cassandra, and even though these are just, you know, public meetings, I think I'll work with her closely to maybe to do the notice of possible quorum, just so that, you know, we don't have to, you know, feel that maybe just one councillor, or, you know, just two of us are going, and the rest are left out. So I'll work with her closely, so that way when these events do happen, you guys will be all afforded at the same time. We could all be there. Just, we can't sit together and can't discuss any business. But moving forward, just to let you know, that's what I'll be moving forward with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, if I could.
Yes.
In addition to that, Mayor, I think I would just put on the record that there will be others that I bring forward to you to do the same noticing through the clerk that may have not historically been attended, or maybe we haven't in some years. But I think it's important. The Highway Commission came up today, and I think it's important that we, because we utilize the Department of Transportation for many resources, it's a good idea to stay more connected with the commission and their work. And so, that among others, will be coming forward as far as lists and information to assure that the mayor and council and our staff are in a position to be able to be present and facilitate us applying for grants and other resources that are connected to many of these organizations.
And I'll also note, I know you probably have this in your, in your report, Mr. Manager, you have an upcoming training with directors and that, and we'll probably work on a notice on that, so that we, you know, through the day, as that training goes on, you know, if we want to, you know, come in and just listen, or whatever, that we'll have that opportunity also. That way, it's not just me and one councillor, and it's, everybody's afforded that opportunity. So I'll work more with that, councillor.
If I could, Mayor.
Yes.
So the date on that training is going to be all day on July 29. We are also looking at the morning of the 30th, but I've asked Mr. Seis, in coordination with our whole team, to take a look at the agenda, which includes heavy work from grants and finance and projects to help us drill down on the, on the actual additional time. But so, you can put on your calendar for sure, July 29, we will be doing that, as well as the morning of the 30th, and we'll, we'll modify that second day if needed, and if it's not necessary for the full half-day. And so, stay tuned. But for sure, July 29 is the date for that training.
We're on grants related and financial. I'll let you, I'm sure you'll.
So essentially, Mr. Mayor, Councillor Casey, we want to make sure that our staff is up to speed on all requirements associated with submittals, on grant proposals, projects, drawdowns, payments, the full cycle. So we're not just engaging our department heads, but we're going to engage our line staff that are in the trenches, day in and day out, doing that work to facilitate accurate submittals, on-time submittals, and compliance requirements associated with all those items. And so, that's kind of a broad stroke of it, but it's going to get into the weeds on that process, to assure we're connecting the dots, not only with the entities like DFA and other grant requirements, but also connecting the dots internally with our finance director. And our finance director, with his team, we're going to speak a little bit more to some of that in his presentation. But that's kind of what we're after.
That's it with my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving on to our councillors' reports.
Councillors. Councillor Montoya.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to have everybody, keep the, all the people from Texas on the flight, and keep them in the prayers, especially the kids. Just devastation for what happened, and just look at the awful news, and hopefully we don't get anything like that, because it just hurts that our kids become dead, or whatever happened to them. But keep them in my prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Thompson.
Let's just go down the line.
Councillor Montoya.
No?
Ladies first.
Nobody wants to talk. Okay.
Thank you.
I'm surprised, because after reading the verbatim minutes, it was a nightmare. Okay. I would like to request a list of employees by department, and anyone who's new, it would be so wonderful if we could actually see their faces, so that when they say hello, Councillor Casey, I know who I'm talking to. Because sometimes it's like, are you, you know, a community member? Are you here on business? Who are you? And it's kind of embarrassing to look at an employee and say, I don't have a clue who you are. Where do you work? What department are you with? So I would really appreciate that. And I know that Mr. Grealish has a list already that he has done in the past, and it would just have to be updated. But I would like to see people's faces, too. And when somebody comes in new, I would like to know who they are, what they're doing, who they're going to be working with, so that everybody feels more comfortable. And we have a lot of wonderful, wonderful employees, and I've heard some good things about the new ones that we have. However, I don't know them at all. And if they're going to be in a managerial position, or a director position, especially, we need to know who those people are. And the directors, of course, you all know, have to be approved by the council, but the managers don't. And so, if somebody's coming in as a manager of a department, we need to see them. And, you know, I've, I've had names tossed at me, you know, saying, oh, so-and-so has pictures of that, or that person, you know, called me already. And I don't have a clue what department that person works in, or what they look like, or what their duties are. And so, those are things that we need to know, so that we make sure that we can, when we request information from the city manager, or we have an issue that needs to be dealt with, we can say, can you please send so-and-so to, you know, see such-and-such constituent, because they've been working with them in the past, or whatever it is. It'll lift some of the weight off of his shoulders, and I think things will run a little bit more efficiently. So I'm very happy about that. And I'm very happy to know that there's going to be the training on the grants, and the trainer is an excellent source to the city that knows a lot. And I think that it would benefit everyone to know exactly how DFA works, how the state works, how the legislative process works, all of those things. And that way, I think things can get done in a more timely manner, and more efficiently, because everybody's working together. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Martinez.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I only had, I was approached by a lady that wanted to see if we could do something with Lincoln Park. I know, there's a few things already taking place. We, you know, the fence is getting more completed as the days go by. That's a good thing. But I think she's having trouble with some of the homeless people that are in the area, just kind of hanging out, and yelling, some of them sleeping there. So she brought it to my attention. And I know they, they have a lot of suggestions. Sometimes they wanted us to use, like, Safeway, really possibly a building that we could probably offer to them for something like that. But that, that's, that needs to be really, you know, thought of property, because it's, you can't just put them anywhere. And, and I'm not sure if it's just singled-out individuals that are causing issues, or what, but that's the only issue I basically have had. On another note, I know that code enforcement's busy with a lot of people with weeds and so forth, because weeds are just incredible everywhere in our community. In businesses, from businesses to residents within our community. I know code enforcement is trying to keep up, but it's, it's almost impossible. The general public just really needs to know that, you know, they need to try to keep their places as tidy as they can. Of course, pick up trash and cut their own weeds, if that's the case. That way, code enforcement doesn't go down to visit them. But it's an equal playing field. Everybody has to take care of their community. This is part of that. So, just wanted to bring that to light. I know that Lucas is busy with a lot of other things as well, that, that city manager has designated his people to do. So, I, you know, and talking to you yesterday, city manager, maybe there are some solutions that we can be worked out. So, anyway, that's about all I have. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
Mr. Mayor. Yeah. My apologies, I wasn't ready, and mindful thoughts on my presentation, on half of it, anyway. But thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager. I got an invitation from the New Mexico DOT, Mr. Travis Martinez, to attend a dedication this morning. And that was a dedication of a, the South Grand Avenue exit 343, Bridge, on I-25, Northbound and Southbound Lane, are going to be, it was an interchange dedication in honor of Sergeant Felix Arbarella. Our city manager attended, the mayor attended, as well as myself, and our staff attended, some of our staff members attended. It was a really beautiful morning, beautiful day for a presentation like that, dedication like that. The family of Mr. Felix Arbarella was present, his wife, his children were present, family members, other members, community members, veterans. The veterans did their presentation there. It was a very beautiful memorial. God bless his soul. He served in 1968 in Vietnam War, as well as per capitol, it shows that San Miguel County and Mora County both served the highest level of soldiers in those wars, in Korean War and the Vietnam War. And this was a really nice dedication for all veterans, because a lot of times, like Chairman Walter Adams said from the New Mexico DOT, you know, a lot of times, our veterans are forgotten. And they go through so much in wars, that they hide their medals in a closet, and don't show them or display them, and talk about them. You know, but they did that for our freedom, for our enjoyment of life. So I thank Mr. Walter Adams, and the secretary was there, from, deputy secretary from the DOT. It was really nice ceremony, and it was really family-oriented. The mayor spoke a few words, as well as myself, and, you know, it was, it was really nice to attend to. Thank you, Mr. Anaya, and your staff for showing up and showing that support. On another note, I'm going to go a little bit off strip over here, and I'm going to take a minute and a half, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, I want to thank Mr. Anaya. I would like to thank him publicly, and assure our citizens of Las Vegas, that you started here, you hit the ground running, and non-stopping pace from the get-go. Okay? This is not to take anything away from our staff and our employees. The positive attitude that you have brought with you shows you've already overcome half the challenges you'll be facing, and that things can get done, and that we all deserve a better community to live in. In the last few weeks, you have displayed that things can get done accordingly, in a timely manner, and in a professional manner, and with lots of research and thought behind it, in a collaborative effort with others, and acknowledging that sometimes, simple things are no-brainers, and just need to get done. Your leadership skills have not gone unnoticed. Your delegation of authority to others, holding them accountable and responsible, goes a long ways. You're a good listener, observer, and follow-through on requests, tasks, and correspondence. Always keeping in mind that we all report to and are under our citizens' payroll, the taxpayer. Thank you very much. And like a longtime friend of mine, Mayor Hendry O'Sanchez used to say, job well done. Thank you, Señora Anaya.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council.
Thank you. And just, I know I used my time up, but I do want to thank Mr. Arnold Lopez and his staff for going out to Rudosso, just in speaking with Christie and those that you sent, you know, the devastation that they saw. You know, we've experienced, you know, flooding and that, but they were overcome by what they saw over there. But thank you, Arnold, and Ms. Amanda, you know, for your organization and helping out, takes, you know, first, put out the PSAs and all the collections that we received from the community. Our community has really stepped up, and we had one load, and I think there's almost another one already. So kudos to you guys for what you've done. As Christie said, that you could tell that the community was very appreciative of what, and I'm not going to say us, even though, you know, we sit up here and we do that, it was you guys on the ground that really, really made the effort to, to take those loads and get those supplies out to, to those families that needed in Rudosso. And thank you, city manager, for really leading that effort. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving on to our police chief's report. We have our police chief, Caleb Marcus.
Good evening, mayor, council, Mr. Manager. I'll switch over here pretty soon. This is going to be the report for the month of June. And you're going to see some of the numbers are off, based off of our system that went down in middle of June. We were able to get it back up and going about a week ago. So, staff's having to go in and manually input calls for service, reports back into the system. So all the numbers weren't completely in yet. You'll see that on the top of the, the display. We had a total of 201 traffic citations for the field operations division, zero non-traffic, 118 parking citations, six arrests. And for instance, on those numbers there, just what we sent to magistrate court alone was over 32 arrests. So the numbers don't reflect accurately. Zero animal control, no burglary, and 823 calls for service. Total calls for service that came into the communication division were 997, 816 hour police, 131 fire department, 122 AMR, 48 animal control, 12 city service calls, and 1,052,91. A part of that that did go down was our phone system, citywide, and I think that's why our number one cost did increase, because that was the only way to get through there for a few days. So, my animal care center, this total does include 23 animals that have been bustered to the homes. But we had a total, beginning of shop account, 95 dogs, 19 cats, for a total of 114. We had an intake from the public of 24 dogs, 13 cats, for a total of 37. We had 11 adoptions for dogs, four for cats, for a total of 15. We had outgoing transfers to our communities or coalitions of five dogs. Outgoing transfers to outside community coalitions, 12 dogs, for a total of 12, no cats. And return to owner or guardian was three dogs. We had We had treatable and manageable, the cats and dogs are euthanized, there's one cat, and died or lost in shelter care was three cats. Ending shelter count was 88 dogs, 24 cats for 112. Our Information Division, part of this, of course, that our system that went down did affect them greatly too, but they entered 41 offensive incident reports, 18 traffic reports, 201 citations, 95 customers attended to, 165 documents scanned, and 19 if requests were completed. Our Street Crimes Division had seven cases assigned to them, 14 self-initiated, three arrests, six search warrants, and closed out three cases. Our evidence cases in was 35, 58 items turned in in total, two items of property released, two grams of methamphetamine, three firearms seized, one fentanyl pill, and 30 if requests processed. For our travels, we had 12 informational travels for the month of June. We had two police cadets, Mrs. Insinius and Lucas Vasero, who successfully completed the mandatory fitness assessment at the Mexico Law Enforcement Academy in Santa Fe on June 23rd. They are currently at the academy, they're on week two as we speak now, completing their second week. For our selective traffic enforcement operations, we had a one DWI arrest, 17 citations for other offenses, 17 for speeding, three immature motorists, one should be suspended or both, and two cell phone violations for a total of 41 citations. We had eight applicants interested in the vacant position, seven uncertified, one certified, three in communication specialist positions, and two applicants interested in the vacant animal control positions. We did hire one entry-level police officer on June 16th, which was a big help for us. He did start in-service training and is currently in-service training right now. We tested last week four, so we'll have about five hopefully coming to the near end of the process that we'll be able to get hired hopefully by the end of July, an additional five officers that are on certified. We attended the Father Day concert on June 15th and also took part in the Friday night of prescos throughout the month of June. Our vacancy rate, we have stayed the same. We've been fluctuating, hopefully we could take that down by next report with the five officers. So it's going to be pretty much from police officers down is all positions hired from the outside. Everything else will be interdepartmental promotions, and we're looking forward to getting those, that process moving so we could open up some more entry-level positions and start filling up the department. And that concludes my report for June.
Councilors, any questions? No. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, moving on to our next item, our Finance Report by Mr. Morris Madrid, our Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before I get to the actual Finance Report, I have a couple of updates. Last Friday, we did hold the exit conference with the auditors in regard to the audit report. Myself, my deputy Dominic Chavez, Councilor Martinez was there, our City Manager and our Mayor were there, and we went over the report and findings and responses. While we can't discuss anything regarding the report until it's officially released by the state auditor, we're hoping that that's days, not weeks. I did submit the release of the five-day waiting period, the waiver, so that's done. The report is in the state auditor's office being reviewed already. So we look forward to the release of that, and I will say I look forward to the release of the content of the report, which is the main thing.
Is there any reason why the Chairman of the Finance Committee wasn't invited to the meeting?
No, actually, it's customary that the chief elected official and chief executive officer are invited. That's mainly the IPA's call, but that could...
I could answer to that. The reason why I asked Councilman Martinez is that he's the pro temp, and that's why.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. And in regard to that, that release is coming soon. The other announcement I have is we did hire, and she began work on Monday, a new procurement officer, Noel Baca. She's attending the certification class all week, and we look forward to welcoming her and giving her a lot of work to do. The other thing that I wanted to update you all on is the process regarding the submission of the fiscal year '26 operating budget. We did have meetings last week with all the department heads for a second go-round if they had any requested changes. Some of them were significant, some of them were none at all. We did discuss them in detail with the Manager Anaya, and we are at the point now where Manager Anaya will together, I'll make a recommendation to him, and he'll make a recommendation to you all as far as the content. So you will see some changes to the interim budget. The idea is, once we have those changes incorporated into the document, which should be by the end of the week, we'll make those edits and forward that redraft for the final to the governing body so that you can review it before the final approval, which will be towards the end of the month. We'll also call for a special Finance Committee meeting next week to have the committee review and make their recommendations. But this is probably the most detailed process that the city has had in a while. So the department heads, the staff, myself, Mr. Anaya have had multiple reviews and multiple opportunities to make requests, and the governing body will have that same opportunity. So that's where that stands. You mentioned a training that's going to occur later this month. From the finance perspective, our focus will be on, since I mentioned the audit, compliance. And I'm talking about mainly the procurement code. That's where we've had findings in the past, and if somebody doesn't know or they're not sure, they may incur a liability, go purchase a tool and pick it up from the vendor without doing a purchase order. That would be a finding, and that's compliance with the code. So that's where our emphasis is going to be, to mainly show people what the rules are, where to look for them, of course, offer our assistance and training, and mainly with state compliance. For example, cash receiving. It's a state statute that any cash received or any payments received have to be deposited by the close of the next business day. Even if we don't know what it's for, it's got to go in the bank. So those are the kind of rules that we're looking at. And also our own procedures. We have procedures that are in place to make that compliance a little easier, make sure we have all the documentation, that we have the approvals. Now, that's another thing that Manager Anaya and I will be working together, he's given me a directive, to research and provide all the policies and procedures related to approvals. For example, one manager may want to see all purchases above $5,000, or another one may require only everything above $20,000. Another manager, another governing body may want to see every single contractual agreement where in other places, if only requires governing body approval if it's a formal process. For example, if there's a warrant of an RFP, absolutely that would come to the council. If we're going to hire a referee for yavel for $15 an hour, maybe six hours a week, no. That's something that would not come to the council. Those are the kind of things that we'll be working on and that Manager and I will bring to you for discussion and approval. So those are a few of the things that are in the works. I have an item that I'll get to at the end of the Finance Report because it is related to our investments and some funding that we did get from the state. But I'll start off with the General Fund now, and I want to start off by saying that these numbers are year-end numbers. They are unreconciled and unadjusted. There are some items that I will point out to you that may look out of line, I'll explain why, and some that really are, and others that shouldn't be a concern at all. I'll start with the General Fund, and the first thing I want to note in the General Fund is in the top, the top section where the revenues are, on the bottom line, if you look at column D and column E, you'll see in column D FY 2024's actual revenues, that was a little over 16 million, compared to FY 2025's actual revenues, over 19 million. That's a very good thing, and in the area of gross receipts, it is a trend, and it is a trend that'll probably continue for at least a couple more years. We believe that that's the effect of a lot of FEMA money that's being distributed and spent. So that is a good thing. On the bottom section where you see the expenditures, I want to point out a couple of anomalies where you see negative numbers. The first one is in the Finance Department, where I've discussed before, where we had payment for insurance premiums that was charged to the Finance Department. That one has not been posted yet, and I want to tell you why. Because when we make payments for our medical coverage and life insurance and benefits like that, they're derived from a list of employee-by-employee individual coverage, individual amounts, they're all different, it's not a flat fee. So when we have to reallocate those, it's a real detailed process, and it's something that I'd like to have our auditors review before we actually post that number. So that number will no longer be negative, but it is right now, and in our final report, in our audit report, you'll see that budget was not overspent there. In regard to overspending budgets, our budgetary control and DFA's budgetary control is at the fund level. So even if there had been overspending within some of the departments, and I'll get to that, within the General Fund, if you look at the bottom line for revenues of 19 million, and you compare that to the total, it looks like we've overspent in the General Fund, but that's not the case. Transfers are cash transfers. They are not budgeted the way the expenditures are. And I'll give you an example. Those transfers of 3.9 million include 1.5 million that was transferred from the General Fund to Recreation Department for the roof. That was never spent. So it's reported because DFA includes that on our summary sheet, and we want to disclose the same thing, but it is not an expenditure. So taking the transfers out, actual expenditures are about 15.8 million, which shows that our actual revenue over expenditures is about 3.2. So even though we did some mid-year adjustments and we spent a lot of our first half savings, our revenue still came in so strong that we were 3.2 million revenue above expenditures. The other anomaly that I want to point out in the General Fund is in the Fire Department, and it shows an over expenditure of 161,000. That's not anything that is a surprise. That is a combination of two things. First, overtime was under-budgeted for the fiscal year. Second, there was more overtime because there were vacancies, and when compensation was increased, that increases the amount that goes into overtime. So that will not change, but I guess the test is, is it reasonable and necessary? Yes, it is. It's something that, you know, is not really negotiable. So that's the activity in the General Fund that I wanted to talk about.
Councilman Madrid.
So, Mr. Madrid, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Madrid, so what was that overtime on? That's a large amount of, $161,000 is a lot of overtime. What was that attributed to?
I can't tell you. I know that there is some overtime that is recurring, normal, and there is some that is outside of normal operations because of vacancies, because people have to be called in, someone has to work an extra shift. It's not all the same.
Now, anything to do with the FEMA fires?
Probably, because we did have crews out there, not the fires, but the flood. And during both our emergencies, our, both our first responding departments, police and fire, always play the primary and biggest role. So the answer is yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Madrid, based off of that question that Councilman Montoya asked, so when it's normally budgeted, I know the hours that Fire Department work versus, you know, a regular city employee, what is it, the 96 hours, you know, those extra, is that considered, is it budgeted within their budget, or is it part of this total?
Actually, that's one thing that we addressed in the current year budget. We have two types of overtime. There's retirement-eligible overtime, and then there's outside of the normal shift. A normal pay period under federal law for firefighters is, I believe, 104 or 106 hours, whereas for regular employees like me, it's 80 hours. So there is a difference there, and the Fire Department does have two types of overtime, and it depends on the scheduling.
Was that one of the discrepancies?
That was one of the things that, in preparing last year's budget, because we primarily took the year before and just rolled it over, was not considered. And in meeting with the Fire Chief this year, Manager and I did discuss that with him. We believe we have that properly budgeted now, or it will be in the document that you see.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Madrid, to that point, could you tell the Mayor and Council the distribution, not by department, but the predominance of the overtime comes from two departments essentially, Police Department and Fire Department?
Yes.
What's the estimated percentage breakout, would you say, associated with overall overtime pay versus those two departments versus the rest of the city?
Those two together probably make up 80 to 85% of all overtime. The other departments, while they have, some of them have on-call personnel or people that are called out for overtime for snowstorms or water, gas leaks, things like that, they're not as frequent as public safety.
So, Mr. Anaya, so what's going to be done in order to adjust that for next year so that it won't happen again? Because, I mean, we project so much overtime for both police and fire throughout the year, and this is going way overboard. I don't even think the Police Department utilized that much overtime. So what's going to be adjusted, or how are you going to handle it for next year's budget?
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Montoya, I think Mr. Madrid's correct. We, with the assumption of full staffing, right, that we couldn't operate off prior year, with full staffing, it's easier to project overall potential overtime. We can keep a running total throughout the year and bring back where we're at through the course of the year. The only, you know, the only items we can't predict are those additional items outside of the normal realm. And so I'm committed to work with the Chief, both Chiefs, the Finance Director, to make sure we're providing the ongoing updates associated with the current budget under a full staffing scenario. a full staffing scenario. If those things change, if we lose staffing and personnel, and we are picking up shifts to compensate for that, it's important for us to, to keep the mayor and council apprised of, of that happening and, and potential impacts. But given the staffing levels where we're at, I think the chief, police chief, also noted vacancies in his area. Those areas, those things also will have an impact on overtime as well. So the more we fill those vacancies, chief, am I accurate in saying, both of you, Chief Marquez as well, Chief Span, then, then it effectuates a drop in overall overtime. And so if we can get those positions filled, then, then we can do better and have a reduction overall in overtime. Chief, correct?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Yep.
So, Mr. Madrid, so the, the savings on vacancies went back to the general fund and were used for something else, but the vacancies of the fire department couldn't be utilized for offsetting this overtime?
Yes, but there's not sufficient savings because the, another thing that happened during the year was the, the collective bargaining agreement was finished after the budget process, and there was increased compensation, which meant larger salaries and larger amounts being paid in overtime. What we failed to do was address it during the year. And the, the short answer to your question is, we're going to increase the budget there. And we're going to need to do a better job of watching it, too.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Montoya, I also think coupled with that process is ongoing communications between the mayor and council for sure, the finance committee, and bolstering our reserves within the city. And so it's, it's not just keeping an eye on the budget, making sure we're on track and on pace, but also bolstering the reserves of the city to, to afford the mayor and council that latitude when necessary. So I think that's the other item I would add, is bolstered reserves.
But, and I guess I'll make this comment, but we're not compromising public safety when we're trying to eliminate overtime, hopefully, right?
No.
Okay, I just want to make, make sure that we're not, well, let's eliminate overtime, and we're not putting public safety at...
No, we in, in the finance department, and I, and I think I can say generally in the city, when it comes to public safety, that's not negotiable. Going on to the enterprise funds, again, these are unadjusted and unreconciled numbers. They are all coming in close to our projections, with the exception of the water fund. You'll see that deficit there. Again, we are still reviewing all the charges in the, in the water fund for reimbursable expenses, just in case there's some that we haven't submitted. We haven't adjusted these numbers yet. Some of these charges, charges, and, and they could be in the millions of dollars, may be chargeable to the FEMA fund that we have later on in the report, and I'll, and I'll talk about that. So while this number is negative and will probably stay that way, it probably will not be as large as you see tonight, the seven point five million. So we are, that is an ongoing thing. It'll be part of our process in working with our consultants and, and the water department itself and the manager. We will try and make that number as small as possible. Again, my recommendation will be, when we do get a significant reimbursement and, and unrestricted reimbursement from FEMA, that the water fund is the first one that we make whole. So that's the only issue that we have in the enterprise funds. Going on to the recreation department, again, activity is starting to catch up, but the end of the fiscal year is right in the middle of, of probably the most active time in recreation. So we won't see any significant improvement, probably until the end of the fall, where we can get a better gauge of the activity there, because there's always a lag between the planning of the programs, the execution of the programs, the collection of the revenues, and a general constant activity. We've had constant activity in the pool now. It has, it doesn't show up here yet, but the short-term trends are looking a lot better in the recreation department. Also, we did have a discussion on the roof. We may be able to use some other funding sources for that, and that's a discussion that we had with manager Anaya, not only for the recreation department, but with the budget that's presented, we are incorporating at least options for other funding sources. For example, in recreation department, we're looking into the possibility that we may be able to utilize residual funds from phase two. And when we extinguish that debt, we will have some money left over. Can we take some burden off the general fund by using that money? Is that within what the voters approved back in two thousand and two? That's one possibility. Another one is, in one of the enterprise funds, you may see a request for a building. And we may not be able to afford the whole building to pay for it outright, but we may have financing opportunities to complete that building that won't cost a lot and will not compromise our finances. So just to keep in mind, these are the kind of things that, that we're talking about and discussing with all the department heads in our whole budget plan. So it's, it's a lot more than just putting revenues and expenditures on a piece of paper.
Councilman Montoya.
Yeah, Mr. Anaya, I think we've heard this over and over on the recreation center, and I'd like to see if you could give mayor and council a report as to how much the balance is that we owe on, on that grocery seat tax on phase two, and the clarification as to what we can use that balance of that money for. We've been asking for that for months now, and we haven't gotten no response. We need to know what the balance can be used for, either for the building or offset the, the operation costs, or other projects, or, or, or we can't use it at all.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, bring a report back.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Going on to the lodges tax fund, while we still see in comparison from prior year less collection lodges tax revenues, we believe that that's one particular, and maybe another lodger that are behind on their payments. So that's not reflected here. Even with that, our unadjusted revenues over expenditures is still a surplus. One good thing that you will see in the expenditure comparison is last year there was less than four hundred thousand spent. This year there was almost six hundred thousand spent. That's, that is a good thing. We are no longer in a position where we may have to revert lodges tax money back to the state. The, the required balances have been spent. In regard to the cannabis fund and also the opioid funds, there's relatively no change there. That money is being expended. However, the actual checks for a lot of the equipment and materials that were purchased by the parks department and the police department, the checks have not actually gone out yet, so you don't see them here. These are actually on a cash basis. But as authorized by the council, those initiatives are moving forward. You saw the ambulances here last meeting. Going past the opioid fund into our, our FEMA fund, now, I'm going to skip that and go to, to the very end where we have our cash and investment report. And the only thing I want to report is that we still have the same amount of money invested, and our earnings are up to almost three million, and we haven't touched that either. That's, that's really the only thing. Our current yield is still right around four percent, so that, that's a good thing. What I want to talk about, and going back to the FEMA funding, and I know manager Anaya and myself have both talked about, what have we spent in, in regard to especially the flood event of last June? And we report on, within this fund, you'll see a little over eleven and a half million within the water fund. Prior to us establishing this fund, there's another seven and a half million that, that was spent on the emergency. So one of the things that we're doing now, we just completed the authorization with the state treasurer, so that Mr. Anaya can approve transfers to and from. So we will be transferring some cash back to the water fund to help reduce that deficit because those expenditures were made in that effort. The one thing that I do want to discuss is, this afternoon, we became aware of an issue that's tied to Senate Bill Six and some of the loan agreements that were granted to the city related to the June event. And I will read the loan agreement numbers. They are loan agreement number twenty-three dash Z H nine zero two zero dash L E S, L A S V E dash zero one. Second loan agreement is zero two. Third loan agreement is zero three. The first one is for fourteen million, nine and sixty-four thousand. Second one is two million, seventy-five thousand, seven ninety-five. And the third one is five million, six hundred and eight thousand, nine fifty-eight. Now, the, the issue that was raised this afternoon is that under these agreements, when we got this cash and put it in the bank, the intent of these agreements was to provide cash flow to the city until FEMA was to reimburse these expenses. These would be paid back to the state within thirty days after we got paid from FEMA. Well, during this whole time, we considered these loan agreements and cash to be put forth towards the remediation of an event, not a particular project. Well, we found out this afternoon that that may be an issue. It may be that each loan agreement is tied to a particular project. It is definitely not clear in the agreements, and we believe that the, the intent, the absolute intent of the Senate bill and the loan agreements was to provide assistance to the city to address the event. Now, I think there's, the, the discussions that happened back then maybe were vague or not documented. I'm not sure. I know that city manager Anaya is absolutely going to get to the bottom of that and get this clarified, and, and maybe with that, I should turn it over to you, Mr. Anaya.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. Madrid. The essence of this item is very simple. The essence is there were expenditures made in accordance with duly reimbursable expenses that the city has made. We have made expenses that are consistent with the requirements for reimbursement with FEMA. When I came on board a couple months ago, I asked for all the documents and the backup documentation associated with expenditures that we have made as a municipality connected to funds that are reimbursable. The other thing I received was documents from SB Six, Senate Bill Six, that you, the mayor and council, have received from myself in discussions in my manager's report, associated with the twenty-two million, four hundred thousand dollars. And I'll, I'll defer to, to the finance director for the exact amount. But the essence of it is we had twenty-two million plus that was eligible tied to Senate Bill Six to be able to spend for issues that were reimbursable. I did not have, nor have I seen additional written documentation that connected each dollar from those loan agreements to a specific project. I was told that there was a connection that was made, and what I'm trying to find out, mayor and council, is where was that connection made, and was that conveyed in writing to the city of Las Vegas? And so what that means, here's what it means. My intent, associated with the loans that we received from SB Six, was to fill, backfill our resources and utilize the loan resources to cover expenses before we utilize city resources to cover expenses. If the funds are tied to a specific project, and there's a written document somewhere that articulates it must connect to a project, then the amount of money that we put back in the water fund and other areas of the city would be affected and impacted. And so what we're going to do is go through a process, what was provided to the city of Las Vegas in way of documentation in addition to what I have. What do I have? What does the finance director have? We have the loan agreements from the state in New Mexico, and then we have the dispersed money that was put into our account tied to those loan agreements. As I find additional documentation, I will bring that documentation back and articulate what that implication might be to the money we backfill into our resources. And so my interest, straight off, is to utilize those resources to put back in the water fund, put back into the city coffers as soon as possible. I'm going to do that, and that's my intent, based on the documents I have in front of me, unless there's another document that the city said by some principle, if it was the gentleman that sat in this chair or someone else, that articulates anything different than that, I'll bring that back and convey that through the finance director to the mayor and the council. And so that's the essence of where we're at, is we've done reimbursable expenses, we've done them in, in accordance with the requirements, but getting the resources back into our coffers is what we have to verify and assure we do that in a compliant manner. The other thing I would add is, I will utilize the use of our legislative delegation as necessary to assure they're up to speed with what we are doing, and to ask them for support to let us utilize those resources sooner rather than later, and not wait for a project reimbursement to put our money back in our coffers. And so that's my desire, straight off, because that puts our, our resources that we expended and keeps the city more whole. If the determination is made that it has to be connected to a project, then that takes the resources that we took out of our funds to cover those expenses and put those directly at the mercy of a reimbursement back from FEMA, which we know is a, a very large challenge that we've dealt with, because the best case that we have for reimbursement is one case that we're looking at, one project for just over six million dollars, that is at the edge of the cliff of getting reimbursed, but we haven't received a penny yet. And so I wanted to say that on the record. I'll stand for questions. That's kind of where we're at. Is that, and I, and I don't just look to Mr. Madrid, I had other leaders in the discussion, Mr. Marquez, or both Mr. Marcus's and any others. If, if I've left anything out, please make sure that I have it so that we can clearly convey to the mayor and council and the public where we're at associated with those expenditures. So.
That was Councilman Montoya.
Yeah, Mr. Anaya, you know, when that Senate Bill Six passed through, my understanding was that it was a, a loan to the municipalities that were affected and, or the counties that were, were affected by the fire. And as long as it was related to the fire, that we could use it as, as we pleased. It was a loan. I mean, when I lend you some money, I mean, you can use it for whatever you want. I just want to get it paid back. So the thing is that... So, the thing is that, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know where this is coming from, if this is from DFA or from where this conversation started or what. But I would recommend that you and your staff get a copy of Senate Bill Six in black and white, and let's read through it and see exactly what it was intended for. And at one point, the governor was even kind of throwing the idea that maybe down the road that those loans could be forgiven if the legislature would forgive them. I mean, you'd have to go through them, but that's neither here or there. But I would, I would research it a little bit more in detail and find out exactly where it's coming from. And if it's not part of Senate Bill Six, I mean, we can't be held to something like that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Montoya, and I want to be explicit and clear. Within the parameters of Senate Bill Six and that loan document that was agreed upon, we are in compliance with that, and we are also in compliance with the note. What I'm getting background information on is in order to effectuate the money getting transferred to the city, we had to do an application. And so, that application was a digital application. Mr. Madrid, nor any staff member here, did that application. That application came through the manager's office and was digitally documented. So, we're trying to get our hands on that application to see if the application connected the funding to a project. If it did, Mr. Mayor and Councilman Montoya and the full council, I still want to go back to the state. I still want to go to the Senator, the senators, the Senate and the legislature and say, because we upheld the intent of the loan agreement and the note, we want to utilize the resources so that we don't deplete our resources and our city funds, and we believe that that was the intent of the legislature in the first place. So, even if the answer to the question is there was a connection to the application, I'm going to tie back and I'll work with our appropriate counsel on the matter to articulate that within the letter of the agreement we signed, that we are still within the letter of the agreement. And so, I just wanted to say that on the record and, but I will continue to look into it, mayor, full council, to make sure that I keep you apprised and that we're completely in compliance with the state, FEMA and everybody else. But the root goal, and I think the entire internal team is connected to it, is keeping the city coffers as whole as possible while we wait for reimbursements from FEMA. And that was, we believe, the intent of the legislation.
Councilman Ullabari.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, Mr. City Manager, I know FEMA had a disaster findings, but I'm talking about Ward One. Ward One is disaster area, potholes all over. I think I took you for a tour. I think the rest of the city needs work undone, but I, I'm talking about my ward. My ward, Mr. Madrid, I don't know if you can find some fundings or any kind of money that we can take care of some of these streets that are really bad. And what I can say is, Mr. Manager, that if you want to take Mr. Madrid to those streets and see where he can find some money or use some of his money to take care of these streets because they're, we're sitting in a disaster area. And the thing is that I go look at the rest of my wards, some need help, but I'll tell you one thing, my ward needs a lot of help. So, I want you to start looking at that. Mr. Madrid, please look at that and see where we can go from there. The thing is that we got Mr. Lopez doing potholes year-round, potholes. The streets, the West Side streets are bad, very bad. It's like driving in a dirt street, and it's been looking like that forever. And I don't know if our city manager or our finance directors have been looking at that, but I want, now that we're talking about it, I want you to start looking at that because there's some monies that we need to spend, and maybe we could look at that, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Ullabari, here's what I would say in response. Part of the process that we're going through is to maximize the use of existing city revenues, but without question, citywide, there are potential funding opportunities that exist with other entities, including utilizing our own resources. And as resources expire from debt payments that we're making, consistent with what was noted earlier and recreation and other areas, there has to be more creative ways for us to utilize the resources we have, find new resources, and then be creative about financing mechanisms to expand the amount of resources we're spending on capital work. Bottom line, we need to be more creative about leveraging more resources to do more capital projects than we have historically done as a city. So, I hear you. I'm in agreement with you, and I will work with the team internally to assure as we find opportunities, we bring them back to the mayor and the council to vet and make decisions on possibly moving forward with some of those measures to grow the amount of capital that we have to improve roads in your ward and throughout the city.
Let me start high up. I understand that, but there's some findings in here that you can use some, utilize that money, Ward One. I think if you talk to the rest of your directors and they're, they're spending so much on their budget and they have so much left, maybe you could get those directors to put some of their money for their streets. Those streets are bad, Mr. Anaya, Mr. Madrid. They're bad. And the thing is that we're not getting anything done. We're potholing, we're doing potholes, potholes, and I don't know what our budget is on just potholes. But Mr. Lopez, every year, same potholes, same potholes. We're not getting anywhere. And the thing is that, Mr. Anaya, you are a city manager, and Mr. Madrid, you are a finance director, we've got to start looking at something that we need to get the streets done. Not all of them, but maybe one, two a year, every other year, whatever it takes just to get them done. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Montoya.
Yeah, Mr. Anaya, it's my understanding that the city of Las Vegas has some claims against FEMA for road repairs. I don't know on, in what amount and which streets, but I know the trucks and the fire trucks and the water trucks and everybody that came through that fire, you know, destroyed most of our city streets, like H Street itself, H Street, Hot Springs, Mills Avenue and those streets. So, I believe there's a claim to FEMA for millions of dollars to repair those streets in the future. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Montoya, we just went through those claims. There's over, just over five million dollars so far that we have as a project relative directly to roads. Frankly, we're going into a meeting tomorrow with FEMA, and we're going to try and take that project that's at the cliff, that I've been told is at the edge of being reimbursed, and get that funded or get some money back in, because we haven't received a dime, and then work on, on the particular project you noted, as well as the many others that equates to millions of dollars of damages associated with the fire.
And I just want to add, thank you, City Manager and Mr. Madrid. We did just come out of that meeting in preparation for tomorrow with DHSCM and FEMA. And you're correct, I mean, there's all these projects, but I think we're the frustration, not only with this governing body and, you know, our new city manager, is we have all these claims, but we haven't been reimbursed anything. So, as the city manager said, well, what's it going to take to get this six point, you know, million dollars over the edge so we get some reimbursement? And once we get that first, you know, reimbursement, then we'll move forward. But I think the main focus tomorrow as we go to this meeting is that that six point seven million dollars is the goal that we hopefully at the end of the meeting at least have a timeline of when we could get that reimbursed back into, into the city. So, am I saying that?
Mayor, council, you're spot on, and I would note, we're not alone. There's only been, to my understanding, I can only find one reimbursement to San Miguel County for three hundred thousand that although that it's been approved, they haven't even received the check yet. And so, it doesn't mean we're going to quit, we're going to fight, and we're going to coordinate, and we're going to work with all parties, the state, the feds, but, you know, we have these projects at the cliff, and I want to try and help push them, push them over without falling over into the cliff.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Martinez.
So, so is it, my understanding, the intent of the reimbursement from FEMA would have to be the city of Las Vegas front that money to repair our community streets and, you know, the issues that we've had because of, you know, the related fire and so forth? We would have to put our money in there before they reimburse us?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Martinez, exactly. We, we have utilized our money, and we were utilizing the loan money in SB Six. We hadn't done all the drawdown back to the city yet, and we're being careful and cautious, and that's when it came about today that there was a connection, not just to FEMA expenditures, but to specific projects, which hamstrings us in assuring that our funds are full. And so, you hit the nail on the head. That's the crux of it is we've already spent our money, and we've also spent the loan money under the parameters of the loan, but we want to make sure we get that money in our coffers while everybody sits and waits for the reimbursement.
And I just wanted to make it clear to the general public that that's what exactly took place. Even though the road repairs might have been patch road repairs and so forth, we can't just go out there and design a brand-new highway because we got to work within our means as well. So, the general public needs to know that we're doing what we can, now it's on FEMA to reimburse. So, hopefully, we get that, that coming full circle.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Martinez, over eighteen million dollars of work and expenditure that's been spent and paid for.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Anaya, is that eighteen million dollars?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Ullabari, over eighteen million dollars.
Is that on what, is that on, is that on streets or what is that on?
That is not on streets. That's associated with direct impacts of the flooding, direct impacts to our water treatment facility, direct impacts to fixing the dam, direct impacts to the water hauling that took place, to the water distribution. What else, Mr. Madrid?
It's primarily anything related to the restoration and delivery of water to the citizens, not necessarily roads. There may be some earthwork and things that were done in there. Mainly, it was to protect and restore the water treatment plant and the delivery systems related to water. It was just for basic water necessity.
The thing is, the thing is, Mr. Madrid and Mr. City Manager, that these streets that I'm talking about haven't been taken look at for years. And the thing is that every year, they let them pass by, pass by, potholes, potholes. The disaster areas, now that fires came in, you know, the potholes are worse now. And people are getting frustrated because we're not doing anything with them. We're not budgeting for that. I don't see any budgets on it. The thing is that you, you guys got to start looking at that. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. You know, Mr. Anaya, I think, I think, I hope your meeting goes well tomorrow. I seriously do. Because you know what? As I indicated in the previous meetings of us dishing out money and not having an open checkbook, I mean it, we don't. You know, so much is so much, and that's it. Again, I'm going to mention that we have attorneys on our side that we have hired that we haven't utilized. And if that's the way and the route that we need to go in order to start getting reimbursements, I mean, let it be known over there. Let it be known at your meeting that we can't be working like this. No reimbursements, that's not good for us. We need to move on. And then, the second thing is, we still haven't gotten clarification about the interest rate on the ninety-eight million, and if we can use it or not, if it's ours or not. We have nothing on black and white, on paper. And I'm suggesting that we, we use it, that we utilize that for whatever means we have, even if it's doing a savings account just for the next disaster, whatever this mayor and council decide to do with that money. But we need to move forward and, and, and separate that money from the ninety-eight million and utilize it for storage tanks or for future disasters or for whatever that we need. Because this holding on and holding on for FEMA and it's not working out. It's not working out. We're dishing out money that we don't really have, and it's not going to end. So.
If I could, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, Councilman Montoya, I think it's appropriate to clearly articulate that you can't, we can't continue to fund projects within the resources that we have, especially if there's targeted, specific uses tied to the loan dollars. We won't, we can't. And so, I agree, and I will continue to bring back the feedback that we get, but also work with the finance director to articulate where we can't make approvals. I'll, I'll say this last piece because I think it's relevant. Mr. Madrid and the department heads can tell all of you on a day-by-day basis, every purchase requisition that's crossing my desk, I'm scrutinizing, I'm kicking back, I'm asking for additional documentation and information to not only quantify the work, but connect it to the skill set and the engineer's estimates and the required output and result. And I, I will, I, I'm, that's what's going on. And so, I say it respectfully, professionally and truthfully that it's, it's, it's not a bypassing comment, it's an essential necessity from myself and every single department head, including the finance director in his review, because we don't have a blank check, and we are at the point now, dependent upon the restrictions that they would tie to the SB Six dollars, would really put us in a, in a difficult situation. And so, I just, I would end with that. And see, did you want to add anything to that last piece?
That's, that's exactly right. And where Mr. Anaya or even myself are not sure, we are getting clarification. I saw an invoice today from a consultant that Mr. Anaya wasn't sure of. He asked me to review it. I'm familiar with it, but not completely sure. So, I consulted our police chief so that we know that every dollar is being spent the way it should with the right authorizations, and Mr. Anaya is right. And it's been kind of a pain, but it's true. These contracts, for example, that are on their multiple-year renewals that he's not familiar with, he's getting familiar with. And, and all of us are communicating in, in a more detailed way, and it's not, this is the way we've always done it. And, and that's really, really good to hear, and it's a real good environment to work in because that the nature of finance is to kind of be the financial cops. And to have that initiative and that support is going to result in, in more efficient use of our money and more efficient operations. So, yeah, that's exactly the way it's going.
And all I'm saying, Mayor, is this, you know, we shouldn't be at the mercy of FEMA. We didn't ask for this. They did it to us, so they ought to pay up. That's the bottom line. We don't deserve this. We need to move on. People out there need water. We need a new plant, we need new tanks and the whole works. We didn't ask for none of this disaster. So, I think that we got to keep the state in contact because if, like the governor said, if they don't pay up, guess what? She's going to ensure also on behalf of the state that we do get paid. But again, you know, three years is too long already. I mean, we'll be gone, somebody else will come in and forget about it, and what? You know, we're, they're old, we're old. They owe us. So, they got to pay up. So, thank you, Mr. Anaya.
Thank you. So, we'll go ahead and move on. I don't know if you're done with your financial report.
Done, Mayor and Council.
I, I think, you know, the frustration here, I think we all have it, and tomorrow we'll, we'll go ahead and convey that to, you know, in that meeting. So, moving on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving on to our next item, approval of minutes for June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Motion by Councilman Ullabari, and I'm sure Councilor Casey already made.
I, I made, I made corrections. I did not change any of.
I did not change any of the language because it was verbatim. But there were some homophones in there like principal that ends in L E or A L and changed the, you know, the spelling so that it's correct. And, um, capital, uh, words that needed to be capitalized and things like that. So, and let's not do that again.
Motion by Councilman Libari, second by Counselor Casey, local.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Libari? Counselor Montoya? Have a motion by Counselor Libari, a second by Counselor Casey. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda, if I may read, um, items one through four into the record. Request approval, first item, request approval of a continued memorandum of understanding between the City of Las Vegas and the Village of Pecos for fiscal year twenty-six. Consent item two, request approval of a North Central New Mexico Economic Development District, non-metro AAA Title III federal and state program subaward for nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand one hundred and eleven seventy-nine. Consent item number three, request approval of a North Central New Mexico Economic Development District, non-metro AAA Senior Employment Program Host Agency Subaward for twenty-five thousand five sixty-four. And consent item number four, request approval of a North Central New Mexico Economic Development District, non-metro AAA Nutrition Service Incentive Program Subaward for forty-three thousand eight twenty-two.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as it was read into the record.
Motion by Counselor Casey, second, most counted by Counselor Montoya, local.
Counselor Libari?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Montoya?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Have a motion by Counselor Casey, a second by Counselor Montoya. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion carries. Moving on to our business items, we'll go ahead and take the first item that was moved from consent agenda. Request approval of addendum number two to contract number thirty-nine ninety-one twenty-three with Bohan and Houston for water treatment plant facility planning, design and construction. We have Adrian Aliman, who is in, um, taking Travis's place for tonight's meeting. And Ms. Shawnee Muniz.
Your first presentation to council.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I wanted to, uh, let you know that I, I believe it's important. Uh, and it goes to a comment that Councilwoman Casey made earlier about communication and hearing from others in the trenches. And so I want to let you know that these two individuals, uh, uh, do an outstanding job in their own right on a daily basis. And so, uh, I, I will be bringing, uh, not just because Travis is out. I, I think on a regular basis, I'm going to be bringing more of those, uh, folks that are in the trenches, uh, helping the department heads succeed with them. And, uh, today's an example. Uh, I, I'm going to give them a, a chance to explain into the record. But I wanted to just say on items five, six and seven, uh, those aren't connected to the new plant. Uh, they're connected to existing resources as necessary. So, Mr. Aliman, thanks for being here. Thank you both for being here. Go ahead and, uh, make comments on the record.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you guys for having me here.
Good afternoon.
So we bring here is, um, contract three thousand nine hundred ninety-one dash twenty-three with Bohan and Houston. We want to enter into addendum number two. And this will be for, from August third of twenty twenty-five to August second of twenty twenty-six. And I, I'll stand for any questions you guys may have.
Mr. Uh, just, I know this is our, our second year, but is the background of what they've done within the previous contract?
Um, okay, yes, sir. So we currently did finish a, a major project with them. They, um, they were the engineer on the track back project. They were excellent. They, um, were always there. They're always calling me, just checking up with the contractor. They also are the, the engineer for our SCADA and that's an ongoing project. And they plan, design, and they're helping us with the construction phase. So they, they have been assisting us and those, those are two major projects that they have helped us with.
We've got, uh, questions or entertain a motion or Councilman Martinez?
These, uh, this is on an as needed basis or for, uh, for the event? Okay.
Yes, sir, that's correct. It's on as needed basis. So if we, if we get a project forever, we'll, we'll, uh, get a task order from them and then we'll, we'll get, make sure that money's budgeted for. Then we'll move forward with requisitions and purchase orders.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So are you saying that this company is already on the planning and design of our new water treatment plant?
No, sir, this is a separate contract. They're, they're assisting us with projects that are at our current, our existing water treatment plant.
Okay, because in the scope of work, it says, um, offer shall perform water treatment plant facility, plan, design and construct.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Um, because they have to plan and design the, the new projects such as the, the SCADA. They assisted in planning and all that.
I'll make a motion to approve amendment number two, contract number thirty. Contract number three nine nine one dash twenty-three. Thank you.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Libari?
Yes.
Counselor Montoya?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counselor Montoya, a second by Counselor Casey. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion carries. Moving on to our next business item, which would be, um, item number six on the consent agenda, request approval of addendum number two to contract four thousand three dash twenty-three with HDR Engineering Incorporated for water treatment, planning, design and construction phase engineering services. Ms. Charlie Martin.
Shawnee, if you guys don't mind, as we go through the next two items, just talk about the projects that are currently being worked on. And again, it's as, as needed, I think that's, needs to be noted for the record. But just a couple of projects as we go through these next two items that they've been.
So, um, HDR has done some work for us as well. They did like, um, a plan and they, they were, they were doing like a facility plan and all that. They also did, um, years past, like about last year, they did do a task order for sediment removal from Story Lake. Also Moles and Corbin, they're, they're the head engineer on the, one of the major projects we currently have, which is the filter bed rehabilitation. So that's an ongoing project that we have with them as well. So, um, we do have a lot of ongoing projects with, with each one of these engineering firms. And, um, I'll stand for any more questions.
So I guess, uh, specific to item number six on the consent that we moved over, any questions?
No questions, Mayor.
Not to entertain a motion?
Did you say sediment removal from Story Lake?
Uh, yes, sir. It was, I think it was a sediment. I'd have to, I'd have to check out the task order. Um, I'm sorry, I did not print that out and have that information, um, readily available for you. But it was for, um, it was like, like a year and a half ago, whenever they did, they, they were doing like a design on it.
On your version?
Uh, it was, I'm not too sure, sir. I'd have to get back on that. I was just, I, I kind of was doing my research. I did not, I did not follow through though. I will get you that answer.
I'll move that we, uh, accept, uh, denim number two to contract number four zero zero three dash twenty-three.
Motion by Councilman Montoya. Do I have a second? Second by Counselor Martinez, local.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Libari? Counselor Montoya? I have a motion by Counselor Montoya, a second by Counselor Martinez. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion carries. Item number seven on consent, which is now business item, request approval of addendum number two to contract four thousand four dash twenty-three with Moles and Corbin and Associates for water treatment, planning, design and construction phase engineering services.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilman Martinez. I'll go ahead and, uh, move to approve the amendment number two for contract forty. Four dash twenty-three with Moles and Corbin and Associates for water treatment and plan and design.
Motion by Counselor Martinez, second by Counselor Casey, local.
Counselor Libari?
Yes.
Counselor Montoya?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counselor Martinez, a second by Counselor Casey. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion carries. Moving on to our next business item.
Thank you guys for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys. And Mr. Anaya, I think it's a great show, you know. I think sometimes we have our directors come up, but there are people under them that do a lot of work. And I think this shows tonight. So thank you. Thank you, guys.
Our next item is request approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Las Vegas and San Miguel Mora County Fair Association. We have our Community Development Director, Mr. Lucas Marcus.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, uh, just, and City Manager. Just real quick, I wanted to give a little bit of an overview of why we came here with this MOU, sir. There is going to be, uh, a concert that they're going to be putting on or an event for the Morata Miguel County Fair now in August. And as we were going through the, through the contract, we noticed in the original contract that there was nothing in there that would provide for this type of event in there. There is in the original, not a deadline, so there is just a contract that's ongoing. So I went ahead and, uh, we, we rewrote it, uh, just with a couple of, of new additions. And we went ahead and passed it through, of course, our city attorney and, uh, our city manager to make sure that everything was, would be, uh, in compliance with, with sticking in pretty much to the original, uh, MOU. And if it's okay with you guys, I'd like to kind of just tell you guys what the, what the changes were. And, uh, so you guys could go ahead and let me know what your thoughts are.
Does Council have questions or?
Well, first of all, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman.
Uh, who is the attorney that reviewed this?
It's going to be, uh, Mr. Castellano.
Okay. I didn't recognize the signature. You know, on, on page of one of five.
Yes, sir.
You know, I, I would say for next year's contract.
Okay.
On the second whereas.
Okay.
Where it says, um, on the second sentence, the facility is used by county residents for various indoor and outdoor events or activities. I mean, I think that event, uh, specifically that event, uh, should include Mora, Las Vegas and surrounding areas. Because they come from everywhere. And then, uh, I, I, I didn't realize it was forty-six acres that we own there. And, uh, Mr. Anaya, you know, that's one project I think we need to start moving forward with, um, and, and revitalizing. We toured that, Mr. Lopez and the previous city manager and myself toured that place, uh, a couple of months ago, and it's overgrown with, uh, with trees. And, uh, the road ground itself needs a lot of attention and so forth. But that's one area the city could, uh, improve economic development.
Agreed, sir.
And if we can utilize, uh, larger tax force, some of that stuff, that would be great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just briefly, on the second whereas, I think we'd have to reword the entire paragraph based off that, that opinion, only because it starts off as saying San Miguel County uses this acreage. So it's speaking specifically to San Miguel County. So it's saying those county residents. So if, if council does want that to be reworded to include City of Las Vegas and Mora County, we can do that. We just have to reword kind of the entire paragraph. So I don't know how you guys feel about that. Just kind of more of a housekeeping matter.
Something for next year's, uh, contract, something to think about because, I mean, they all utilize it. They'll, they'll come in. So it's, it's, it's just saying that there, those are the people that use it. Those are the residents that use it. Uh, has nothing to do with really the county or the permission. But that those people are utilize it. The contract with us is with the county regardless. Thank you, Mr. Castellano.
Just to be clear, it's with the, uh, county fair, right? Not with the county, just to be clear.
It's, it's the, the San Miguel Mora Fair Board Association.
Yeah, and, and.
To use the, to use the property that the city owns. Yes. Within that fairground.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and, and that board, there's board members from Mora and other areas in that board. And that's why I'm saying we should include those areas because it, it's more of a region board.
Okay. Well, I'll definitely sit down and talk with the city attorney and see what we could come up, up with for next year.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Attorney, is your recommendation that we make those changes now upon this approval or it's okay?
I, I don't, I don't think it, it really affects the legality of, of the MOU per se with that change. But I think we can definitely add for the next year, uh, uh, its own whereas. I, I, I still don't think we should change that one. I think we add its own whereas where we say the fairgrounds are used by members of the public from Mora County. Uh, we, I mean, even Wadalupe County, um, City of Las Vegas, something to include kind of the general area to make sure that we're including the youth that come and show, you know, animals and things like that. So I think it's certainly okay to approve it as is now. Um, and I think with the recommendation from Councilman Montoya, the next year's we can add a, another whereas paragraph. However, that's not to say that if you guys choose to, to change that today, uh, Lucas and I will get together right away and make that amendment right away.
And, Mr. Mayor, um, you said it's not between the City of Las Vegas and San Miguel County. But under it says San Miguel, City of Las Vegas and San Miguel. Is that El Valle? Because it does say San Miguel on, on the contract.
The heading, yeah, the heading says the Mora San Miguel, the San Miguel slash Mora Fair Board Association.
It's, it's.
That's what they're called, San Miguel Mora County.
Yes, the, the board is called that, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Got you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just had one comment in, in reference to the, the event that they're going to be having. Will we be participating in fire and safety as well? Or can you give us some kind of information on that?
I, I can, sir. Uh, Counselor Martinez, um, so we did have a, a design in, uh, well, a DRT, a design and review team, uh, meeting on it. I, I met with fire, I met with police, uh, all department heads. Because there are water lines over there, there are gas lines in that area, uh, public safety's given their input. Uh, the fire's given their input. Uh, Mr. Lopez went out there today and went ahead and, and, uh, graded the areas that we're going to be putting the stages and where there'd be a more firm ground for fire trucks to be parked on full time, uh, just in case, uh, where they're needed, which we, which we hope they're not, but we're, we're always grateful for having them there. Um, also, we, we cleared areas out for the overnight RV parkings that are going to be, uh, a part of this, uh, uh, MOU now. Uh, but everything has been gone through on the proper channels. Um, I can have, um, Brianna, if you want, before, uh, we have the event, come over here and explain a little bit more if you guys like. And we could show you guys the actual grounds on the TV, just so you guys see what the setup is, if you guys would like that.
For me, that's not necessary. I just wanted to make sure that public safe, you know, safety was always included. Of course, I figured it would be, but it's just not written anywhere that I.
Yes, sir. And, and even though the, the county fairgrounds are, are out of city limits, uh, it is city property. So, um, Mr. Marcus still has, or Chief Marcus still has, uh, the, the domain.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, one last question on this. Uh, Mr. Marcus, they do have, carry their liability, million dollar liability insurance?
Yes, sir. So they, they're going to have to go through the same process that any other person throwing an event on city property would do. And they'll go through, uh, Mr. Chug Grego, they've already started that situation, that whole setup. And they do have their, uh, their license naming the city, uh, part of that, uh, I'm sorry, their insurance naming the city a part of that.
Yeah, because that should be part of this application or this, I meant this, uh, request.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we'll, um, move that we approve the MOU between City of Las Vegas and San Miguel slash Mora County Fair Association.
Motion by Councilman Montoya, second. Second by Councilman Martinez, local.
Counselor Libari?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Montoya?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
I have a motion by Counselor Montoya, a second by Counselor Martinez. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, counselors. Appreciate you guys.
Moving on to our next item, request approval to award request for proposal twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight to Stag Luisa for professional legal services for special PFAS litigation counsel and enter into contract. We have, um, Adrian Aliman again and Ms. Shawnee Muniz.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you guys for having us again. So we want to enter into contract with Stag Luisa. This vendor or this firm will, uh, provide legal assistance with recovery of funds associated with PFAS and/or AFF litigation. They will also assist in the negotiations of any claims, um, related to PFAS and/or the, um, AFF delegations. I can give you a brief description of what PFAS are in case you guys aren't aware. They are, PFAS are substances, are a group of synthetic chemicals that have been used in a large number of purposes since the nineteen fifties. PFAS have been used in food packaging, cleaning products, stain resistant carpet treatments, non-stick cookware and firefighting foam. So, um, I'll stand for any questions. We'll stand for any questions that you guys may have.
So, so Counselor, thank you, Adrian, and, uh, I, I guess just to give kind of a brief history on how this all came about. I know the manager, uh, previous manager wasn't here, but he's the one that initiated this. But basically, I know he had some individuals come and provide, uh, I was able to catch the tail end of a meeting to provide the, you know, uh, there was a class action, I guess lawsuit or settlement nationwide that, uh, you know, communities really in New Mexico weren't, uh, involved in yet. So they had suggested, you know, do an RFP. As I did give you guys kind of a brief summary of, you know, what this entails. You know, there was a, a settlement range from thirty-six million to fifty million. So an opportunity for the city to tie into this class action settlement. But of course you need legal representation, some testing. some testing, and as you see, some timelines there. One of the timelines is to, you know, have some testing done by January 1st of next year. So we were kind of in a crunch. I know this previous city manager had, you know, initiated. We didn't use any of the current legal, you know, for review of this RFP. I think, you know, he worked it in within executive, and I think if I correctly, maybe the attorney, water attorney, reviewed the RFP before it was submitted. I don't know if you guys knew that part, Mr. Domenici. So, you know, to give everybody a fair shot, just in case. So at the end, you know, I know, I asked about it, where it was, you know, in the transition from Mr. Anaya to, from the previous to Mr. Anaya, because we're kind of on a time crunch on this, you know, to tap into some of those settlement funds. So the RFP was done, and this is where Mr. Aliman and Shani came in and Travis came in. So I can't answer every question. Like I said, I caught the tail end. It just, this was initiated, an opportunity, if I remember, the tail end somewhere, anywhere from two-hundred-and-fifty thousand to possibly three million that the city can, maybe, depending on how the testing results come about, but that's, you know, an opportunity there. At the end, it's, you know, only if, I think in the, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Adrian and Shani, in this RFP, it's only if we get any funds collected through the use of this legal right now that the RFP went out. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. So we won't pay them until, if we win the litigation battle, if we win. And I did some research, and the potential range that a lot of these communities are getting, where the range is, is thirty-six thousand to fifty million, with most of the communities getting between two-hundred thousand to four million. So it's a lot of money that we can potentially get, which will be great.
What's the percentage that they get?
I believe it's thirty-three percent. It's on the back of their contract.
And that's on the number that we get?
Yes, sir. Thirty-three percent of the litigation.
And who?
The settlement, yes.
And who is going to oversee this RFP, my ask? Who's going to be overseeing it?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Montoya, I will have my hands in it and oversight and work in partnership with our project team to oversee it. I think it's an opportunity to get revenue we wouldn't have otherwise had access to. And the only other thing I would add is, the feedback that I've received is, this PFAS is a forever chemical. It never goes away. So it gets into our air, it gets into our rain, and then gets back into our water systems and potentially our water systems. So that's what, this will engage in a testing phase, and then legal action to hopefully get a settlement to get resources back to the city. But I will keep my hands on it, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Montoya, in partnership with our collective team.
One last question, Mr. Mayor. Sorry about that. So is this claimable to FEMA for reimbursement?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I think this is independent of that. I think it's part of a separate subset of litigation. I mean, Council, could you better answer that?
Yeah, it won't be tied to FEMA, only because these forever chemicals were present long before the fire. It wasn't until recent that they were discovered. And so, assuming they are present within the city, that litigation can occur, but it more than likely won't be tied to any type of Hermits Peak Calf Canyon litigation.
I just wanted to add to what our attorney has said. If you've probably have seen, if you read the Journal or the New Mexican, have had several articles on the PFAs that exist pretty much in every water system in the state. And so I think this is a very good idea, if we can get some money coming to the city for that particular issue. I think that we should go ahead and.
Other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Or did you, Mr. Attorney, did you have anything else to add?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I move that we approve the RFP 2528 to Stag Luisa for professional services for special PFAS litigation counsel and enter into a contract.
Motion by Counselor Casey, that's second. Second by Councilman Martinez. Local.
Counselor Montoya?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Libardi?
Yes.
Have a motion by Counselor Casey, a second by Counselor Martinez. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
Thank you for having us.
It's nice to see you.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next item, request approval of resolution number 25-26 to apply for and accept a grant offer in the amount of one million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-six by the Federal Administration, FAA, and the New Mexico Department of Transportation Aviation Division. We have our Public Works Director, Mr. Arnold Lopez.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and City Manager Anaya.
I come for a request of approval to this resolution to accept a grant offer in the amount of one million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars by the Federal Administration and the New Mexico Department of Transportation Aviation Division. Our match on this is a one percent, which is very low, and I stand for questions.
Second, Martinez.
I'm going to go ahead and move to approve resolution, I'm sorry, go ahead and approve the one million, six hundred, sixty thousand, seven hundred thousand, one million, sixty. I guess I'm saying that wrong. One million, one hundred and sixty, yeah. For the aviation division of the, for the airport, Ms. Millerport.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Libardi?
Yes.
Counselor Montoya?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Have a motion by Counselor Montoya, a second by Counselor Libardi. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion carries. I mean, Counselor, that was by Counselor Martinez, a motion by Counselor Martinez, and a second by Counselor Libardi. Motion carries. Moving on to item number four, request approval to award, request for bid 2025-31, high game fencing at the City of Las Vegas Municipal Airport in the amount of one million, one hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty, forty-one, to include New Mexico GRT to Apache Construction Company Incorporated Valley Fence, doing business as Valley Fence Company. Mr. Lopez.
Again, we ask approval to award this RFP, the bid. You know, bids were taken. We had four bidders, and they were not the lowest bidder, but the lowest bidder lacked a signed document, so that was disqualified. So we're asking to go with the second bidder, which is Apache Construction Company. And their bid came in at one million, one hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty, and some change there. And we'd like to ask approval to enter into this contract and proceed to construct this much-needed game fence based on airport safety. We need to move as fast as possible on this project.
Mayor, I move that we approve the award for RFP 2025-31, high game fencing to Apache Construction Company for one million, one hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty.
I have a motion by Counselor Casey. Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Martinez.
Mr. Mayor.
Discussion.
You know, this item went before the Airport Committee, and they also recommended and approved. The only concern that I have with these contracts is that, you know, we have a million, one point five, one point one million dollars, Mr. City Manager. That's a lot of money. And on these contracts, I wish that we could put in here that this company, I know they have all their employees. It's an old company. It's been around fifty years or so, but, and they travel all over the state. But it'd be nice to add in here that they would hire at least two people from Las Vegas, so that some of that money can stay here, and, you know, our unemployment rate goes lower. Because we hire these companies from out of Albuquerque all the time, and, I mean, they live with everything. So I encourage you to just, when you're contacts with them, you know, say, can you hire some people from out here, at least, something. But that's a lot of money that goes out the door out of Las Vegas. Thank you.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Casey?
Yes.
Counselor Montoya?
Yes.
Counselor Libardi?
Yes.
Have a motion by Counselor Casey, a second by Counselor Martinez. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Moving on to our last business item, item number five, update on the after-action review investigation of the February water incident. I believe we have Ms. Stevie Nichols with Ortiz and Zamora, Attorneys at Law LLC. Is she on Google meets?
Here in the audience, thank you for always coming by and, you know, finding out what's happening within the city. I think it shows your interest in.
I try to make it one so much, this meeting. You guys, it's twice a month. I don't know if I can handle twice a month meetings. You guys are very dedicated.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I don't know what technology challenges they're having, but they're trying to jump on. If you could give them a moment. What I would like to add is that we have an individual that's going through the pre-employment process, that has been offered the position for Information Technology Manager within the City of Las Vegas. And so I think this is a good opportunity to note that. Consuelo's working with the individual, and once that process is complete, we can provide additional information. Correct? And I would also note for the record, this isn't Leon or RIT. I don't know what technology challenges they're having on their end, but on our end, we're good. Right, Leon?
I'd like to just thank Dr. Linder also for starting the culinary arts program again. I think that's fabulous. I'm so excited about that.
We're very excited about it.
Yeah. I think it's great. It's great for Las Vegas.
Mr. Attorney, would you suggest maybe a recess while we try to get?
I was actually thinking about that, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think you could take just a brief recess, and then, you know, when they get everyone online, you can, you know, reconvene.
This time, I'll, hold on.
I'm here now.
Stevie, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Leon, can you in here turn up her volume a little bit, or is that? We're maxed out on this side. Okay. So maybe if you get a little closer to your screen, your mic or however.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yeah, I think that.
Testing.
I'll go ahead and start here, Ms. Nichols.
Good evening.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, you can hear me better now?
I know that the community has continued to ask the questions. I know, you know, city manager and even up here, I've sat, and we discussed about, you know, this ongoing after-action review. And I know here amongst the governing body, we've been wanting to see where that stands. So I think it's important that we all hear from you kind of where we're at, if you don't mind giving us an update.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you, Council. Good evening. My name is Stevie Nichols. As they stated, I'm an attorney with Ortiz and Zamora, and I have conducted the after-action review, which included an investigation of both the February and March water emergency incidents in Las Vegas. These were, were the result of water pressure in the water distribution system, a loss of water to residents, the loss of the water supply. So I was brought on to conduct the investigation more toward the beginning of May during the transition of the city managers. The goal in my investigation was to provide an objective, outside risk management perspective and analysis just of those events and what led to them. In the course of my investigation, I've interviewed City of Las Vegas employees, contractors, administrators, and folks in management positions. I met with fourteen individuals. I conducted over twenty interviews to just analyze the factors that contributed to the boil water advisory. And I also have reviewed hundreds of pages of documents and expert reports that were provided to me as a result of those interviews. To this point, I have found no indications of malfeasance and no indications of intentional negligence on the part of any city employees or contractors. So I wanted to make that very clear. Over the next few days, I'll be generating a final report, and that will contain my analysis, and it will also provide several management recommendations going forward. And that final report will be complete. It will be ready to be discussed at council's August 13th meeting. But for now, I wanted to just, to relay to you all that there was no indication of malfeasance on behalf of city employees.
Thank you.
I don't know.
I know you were kind of new to this. I don't know if you had any.
No, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think one of the things that I wanted to focus in on was, was there outright malfeasance, illegal activity, or anything of direct concern relative to a legal framework? And based on the feedback that you just heard and that I heard as well, there is not that. What there is, and there will be additional recommendations and feedback in the final report, is connected to communications, management, and other recommendations that Ms. Nichols is going to finalize and provide to us, that I in turn will utilize, as I have from the day I started here, to assure there's appropriate and constant, consistent coordination, communication from all internal and external contractors that support the work of the City of Las Vegas. And so that's the comment I have. that support the work of the City of Las Vegas. And so, that's the comment I have right now, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Councilors, any questions or anything that you'd like to?
So, you'll, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So, you'll have the report, the final report, next month?
Yes. Yes, Counselor Casey. And the investigation is complete. There's a few things that I need to wrap up on, but it's, at this point, it's complete, and so, we'll be delivering that in the coming weeks. But it will definitely be prepared before, so that we can present at the next council meeting.
Okay, I'm, I guess I'm just a little bit concerned that it's taken so long, and this has put a lot of pressure and concern from the employees. And they feel very, I don't know what word to use, insulted, maybe is a good word?
Maybe.
Because they feel that they were wrongly accused of something that was not, had not occurred, and that you've just said didn't occur. There was no malfeasance. There was no negligence. And I just want to emphasize that, for the most part, and I can't say everybody's perfect, but we have really wonderful employees for the City of Las Vegas. And the Water Department has worked very, very hard to make sure that everything is in compliance, and that everything is done correctly, and everything is according to legal requirements from the State Environment Department and the Safe Water Drinking Bureau. So, I just want to make sure that you know, and that people know, our community knows, that our employees have done nothing wrong. The only thing that they have done is worked themselves to death to make sure that everybody in Las Vegas has good drinking water that is safe. And so, I just want to emphasize that, and I look forward to reading your final report and to see your recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilors.
Ms. Nichols, was there any signs or, of employees feeling that way, that they were targeted or anything like that in your interviews?
Were there any signs, did you say?
No. Was there any signs or any indications that employees were, felt that they were targeted or anything in your investigation?
Um, you know, I conducted a thorough investigation, clearly, but I wasn't looking at whether or not employees felt targeted as much as just trying to get to the bottom of, of the science, the analysis, and just fact-finding from each of the folks that I talked to. So, I appreciate your, your thoughts, and it's really important to consider. But, yeah, that's not part of the investigation.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Montoya, could I speak to that? Mr. Mayor, Councilman Montoya, I, I can speak to that in the, in the time I've been here and let you know that there's definite, there was definite anxiety associated with the situation. I don't, I didn't hear any comments about targeting, but I can tell you, I heard directly from staff across the board tied to this particular issue that was definite anxiety associated with, with, with the overall process. And, and not anything against it happening, but how it's rolled out and, and definite anxieties. I wanted to say that on the record, because it's, I heard that directly.
Thank you.
And, you know, I am, you know, I'm glad that this investigation's over. I mean, as elected officials, we got to be responsible and accountable to our public. And now, the public has, we've given the public the answers to their questions, to their frustrations, to their, you know, anxiety and so forth. So, I'm glad that we can move on, move forward, and start focusing on better things. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's, it's been real frustrating, our water situation, but we, as a council, as a mayor, as our city manager and the staff, took care of it. I've been here forever and ever and ever, never have fallen into these, but we did a good job. Did a good job. And I want to thank the attorneys, anybody who was involved. Thank you, guys, and we just got to move on. And this is, this is our little, little, dispelled in the little city. It just takes a lot of effort, a lot of work, but we're doing things that we were supposed to be doing right. Thank you, sir.
And I do want to say, it's not over yet. I think, you know, in keeping up with what was said, you know, by the previous city manager and even me after, you know, decisions were made, is that, you know, we did say a report was going to come out. So, I think, you know, the, the final phase will be, whatever that report is, will be released to the public. So, it's, I know we got a, a sample of, you know, what some of her conclusion was, but there's still a report that will come out to the public to ensure that we fulfill our word in keeping and said, we'll give you a report. So, when that's done, then I think we could all breathe a sigh of relief. But I think this at least helps, and I don't know how far, you know, we don't have nobody from the, in the Water Department now, but, or we have Adrian, but at least maybe he could spread the word and say, you know, some of the, maybe their anxiety that they had, you know, they could breathe a sigh of relief maybe a month earlier before this report comes out. But I think that's kind of what we could say after this meeting, and, but we still have the report coming out. Thank you.
I think they'll be relieved to see, see it in writing.
No malfeasance, no, no intent by anybody or negligence.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Stevie. And I guess you'll work with the city manager to get that report, and then we'll get with the clerk and get that on the agenda for the first meeting in August.
That's correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Stevie.
Thank you, Councilor.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All right. Beat me to it. Motion to adjourn.
Second by Councilman Montoya.